In a good percentage of, up to maybe up to 50% of the counties in the 92. So it's not something that's just hanging out there, one or two people are trying. It seems to be something that's working. Gary and Don and I've had a lot of discussion on this as far as from the product itself to the financial side. Obviously Gary wanted this money or this information to put into Jeff Peters' study as far as, you know, the five-year plan and so on and so forth. So as has been said many times, I think it's time to move on and increase our technology to better perform the functions.
Have we, you know, we've been through this two or three times. And it just seems to me like that we take halfway steps. And it just appears to me that we need, and I thought we did this a few years ago, that we need a IT expert. Now, I'm not saying that our users are not experts, but that we need somebody that, I'd like to use a word here, but that knows what we're doing instead of taking piecemeal steps on software. I'm not so sure. And of course, I'm probably the least of the technology experts in this whole room, but it just seems to me like that we need somebody that knows exactly what we need in this county to develop our program and not a department by department plan. So if we're going to invest, and it seems to me like this plan here is going to cost us 200 grand, which is about $7 per person in this county, that we need a plan that is force user-friendly to the treasurer and to the auditor. But we need a plan to develop the whole county. And if we're going to put 200 grand, maybe we're needs to put in 500 grand and we have a plan that's going to work for 10 years. When I first came on this council, manatron was a nasty word. And that's what we were all using. And we started a new program, but we're going to put 200,000 into a program that I can assure you, although I'm not going to be around, that I'm going to assure you in five years, we're going to say, guys, we've got a program that don't work properly. And so I think we need an IT guy or gal that knows what we're doing.
The problem-
And not to start this program and to do another halfway thing.
The problem is that your options are very, very limited. There are only, I can probably count on one hand, the number of software options that are available for this purpose that meet the state board of account specifications and have been certified by them. So, and I'm also just going to put this out there, the people who know what the software needs to do are the people running your offices. Well, there's no way of predicting what a software company is going to do in the future. And it's kind of the nature of the beast, that it changes early and often. And we just kind of have to roll with the punches on that. I'm not trying to sound sassy, but the reality of it is, is that sometimes software gets changed and departments don't have an input on it, and then they're just stuck with it. That doesn't happen here, but it happens other places.
Okay, let me ask you this. What the 24,000, will that go on the first three years also in addition to the 69,000?
Yes.
Okay, so that program is going to cost us, the first three years is going to cost us almost 300,000.
The conversion itself costs $156,000. And we're opting to do it over three years, so that's the 60-some thousand dollars a year. But we still have to pay for our licenses every year. We have to do that with our current software, so.
So what's the, what's the, do we get out of then paying for the old system? Do we, can we cancel that one out?
Yes, we should be able to cancel that out.
Okay. I just wanted to ask one other question, I guess. You said the assessors thinking about changing as well, which I assume will eventually change the way the property taxes are. Done or no?
These are two completely unrelated items.
I know it is today, but I'm saying if she makes a change in the future to something different on properties.
Well, she is looking at changing her assessment software, which is different than property tax software. And the assessment software that she's looking at going to will integrate with our current property tax software. We also analyze the law property tax software, and Janet and I are not ready to leave our current vendor to move to that. We still have some things in our current software that we like better than what they offer in law.
And the only caution I have about making that switch, and I'm not saying you won't in the future, but I really think for the public use, there's a lot of historical data in there that somehow needs to be preserved, even if you move to a new system. Because there's, right now, when you go on Beacon site, you can tell the trends within your own property tax bills. And I think it's, if we start from square one and just start with 2018, I'm just afraid we lose a lot of historical data that's important to track. So when you go in the future, just remember that, because I'm like Dick, I'm not going to be around either, but it's one of the deals where I think for the future, we need to consider that.
And I would agree, and we would have to, by law, convert several years' worth of data if we move the property tax software, because we do corrections and additional assessments going back at least three years in most cases. Sometimes appeals make us go back even further. So we'll have to have access to that older data regardless. And if we can maintain it in such a way that it continues to display on Beacon, that would just be sprinkles on top.
And I hope that we didn't lose a lot of historical data when we switched over years ago, and that was aggravating, to say the words. I think, yeah, I was commissioner at that time, but still to go back and not be able to see prior years, but it's was a little bit, but anyway. All right. We've had a lot of discussion with that motion being made. I would say, I think I'll lay down the criteria for the motion. What we're going to do, how we're going to pay for, out of what for them, subject to legal approval. Was there any other criteria that I could do?
Just so you can strike one of the, your requirements off the motion, Dan has already reviewed the contract. And it meets his specifications.
Okay. All right. I'm open to a motion. Sure, you can make a motion however you want.
I'm not sure I can make a motion for the cut rule now, but I'd like to make a motion that we fund this project to the dollar amount that we discuss. How, what fund, or it comes out of, I make a motion to refund this project.
Fund to be determined as we go through the budget process. And, I mean, we can set that for future budgets, but we need to figure out some way we're going to pay for it this year. Is that going to come out of real bill?
That's a discussion that we need to have.
Right. But anyway.
I want the commissioner to know that we're behind you. To fund this.
So we have a motion to fund this, and Don seconded it, so. All right.
Okay, I mean, I think we should fund it, but I mean, I don't want to be behind it. But there's some conversations about even this year, if there was some CCD money that's not going to be used, to use that to fund it with. I don't want to hold up the process at all. And if it takes real low funds, fine. But that's a conversation that I have a discussion to add. That's why I'm.
If we're in motion, is there any other question?
Just the question is, what's the numbers talked about here? What is the, what is the dollar figure that you're proposing that we fund there?
It's 153,000. That's total, but it could be over three years.
That's right. Yes. It's a hundred.
Current is 69, you might as well say 70,000.
62,10 first year.
62,610 between now and the end of the year is what we'll have to pay. And then next year to complete paying for the convert, the next two years to complete paying for the conversion, it's 69,996 each year plus the annual software license, which is 24,300. So.
So we will have to pay the 24,300 this year? Okay. So this year it's 62,610?
Yeah. They pro-rated the, because we're not going to be in it for very much of this year.
Okay. Thank you. Right. Any other questions or comments on all this?
I'd like to hear the motion again, I'm not sure I'm-
The motion is that the council will fund this going forward. I think that was your motion up there?
Yeah, I mean, we're-
We're committing to-
We're committing to the 153,000 over a three-year period, plus 24,300 annual contract fees. But we're looking at three budget years. And how best we pay for that, I think, I'm open to the discussion. But we are committed to the cost of the software.
I just wondered if you got that in the man's?
In reality, that's a quarter of $1,000 in three years with the three years contractual services plus the cost of the software. So it is a huge commitment. And it's an unfortunate part of our society that we live by computers and the cost of IT is a expensive thing for businesses and governments alike. But I don't see us going back to using pencil and paper anytime soon. And to be, to be the last one holding on to an antiquated software system seems really dangerous and not very smart. So is that motion standing? I'd like to second Gary's motion to fund this.
Don already seconded, so we're, we're in the discussion. Anybody else have anything? A couple of votes, all in favor, agreed to this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
And I am abstaining. So that's five, five, one in the board. Yeah, I would love the commissioners to continue their business from yesterday on this discussion.
Thanks, Terry. So at this time then, I would request that the, I guess I'll just make it as a motion, that the commissioners would agree that once the funding is established through the appropriation to the contract that was presented and our attorneys reviewed and okayed.
I'll second.
It's allowed.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I think that's it, Chris. I guess, I will, I will ask a question too, that Rob just asked me. Is that 24,000 annual contract, is that a set fee per county, or does that have something to do with the population inside the county?
No, that's just a set fee.
So Marion County would pay 24,000 just like we would?
I would assume so. I don't know. For sure.
Based on the mental licenses or number of licenses?
No, no. The standard issue is big.
That's something that was never brought up. You mentioned it, you looked at, when all departments can be using this system or on at the same time. Has everybody's waiting on one of them to be able to get on the system? Do I appreciate that right?
That's right. Yes, you do.
And this always made that?
Yeah, I mean, yes, it should. Because even if we could, you know, work, set it up on a workstation in each department, plus have all the tour staff on it, plus maybe having it set up somewhere where the commissioners and the council can access it, we still would not hit the ceiling of our licenses, which we're currently doing with our software. We have to send out messages to the people regularly that can get out and sign us, that we can do our job. So, yeah. Thank you all very much. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Terry, do we, do we have enough there to secure the 15,000 discount? I think we do.
Yes, that's what we did. Talked about that. What we had to present to them in order to secure the discount is the signed agreement, which I have out for today. They will in turn bill us, and then we'll have 45 days to pay that invoice. So you have some time to determine your appropriation. Part of the reason that I maxed out the riverboat appropriation today was in case you opted to go that route to pay for it and just, you know, not have to touch it again this year. But I'll leave that up to the council. Like you said, Mr. Peters suggested using CCD funds, but I was looking at that budget. There's nothing to transfer. It would be an additional appropriation that would be needed in that fund if you want, if you all agree to, you commissioners all agree to go that route. So.
We have a couple of days to work out the, how we're going to fund that.
That's right.
All right.
But once you decide, let me know as soon as possible, because I'll have to advertise any additional appropriations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we'll skip over C for right now and go right to D in the presentation of the county CDC budget. Who has that, is that you, Don?
Well, I put together, we all played together, I guess, Don and I put together the budget for the CDC, which to improve to, oh, this is submitted, why is this different than any of the other budgets that's been, because of plate or, what's that? Only because of plate? You just have to use it. Okay. Just submit it. Yeah.
Turn your microphone on, please.
No, the statute says it's supposed to be presented or sent to the auditor by the industry line and presented to the council by office.
Is that, is that part of the local agreement, Dan, do you know? Or is that just state statute?
State.
Okay, thank you.
So as per state statute, you're submitting this Form 1 budget today?
I guess so, yep. We have a CDC meeting tonight, and we'll discuss this. This is what got submitted.
Okay.
It does correct an error that there was omission last year of the legal services line item, so that's correct, but it's other than that, that should come the same time, but.
Okay. Their request for 19 is 355,000.
Is that what the, is that the inkeeper tax, which we're about to generate some of?
That's right. It's all in.
What kind of, what kind of advance or programs do these grants make out to?
The special grants we fund outside of the Bureau, the majority of the money goes to the Bureau. I will say they have had a complete change of focus and vision and direction and are on the right path. And that's a big deal. Tourism's huge to the future community, in my opinion. Wetlands play up there as an opportunity. But some of the specific grants outside of what we give to the Bureau will be the Taste, the Strawberry Festival, things like that. And most of those profit generated from that goes to support the historical landmarks we have here, the museums. So it's very limited is what you can spend the CDC money on. Very limited, the state dictated. But helping those type of events, nonprofits with their advertising, trying to get more people here, that's the point of the inkeeper's tax, is to do everything we can to get more people here and the state, and maybe come back. Anyway, this is a, there is a fairly large expenditure this year due to the Bureau because of their change of focus and what they're working on. That's not sustainable long-term, but we do have 200 to some thousand dollars in cash reserves in there that we're trying to utilize. I think after all, as said in my calculation, there's still 90,000 dollars in cash reserve and they're at the end of next year. So we're not spending it all, but we're trying to utilize this the best that the CDC, we've got a good bunch of folks on that, we're really willing to thank them as well, and we're really working closely with the Bureau, and that's kind of what we want to do.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back up to C and discuss our special meetings and evening meetings. We, the reason I say special is because we have hired Peter to do some consulting for us, and Gary is on top of that, and he's going to enlighten us on who we might need to have a special meeting. I would like to have it before we have our budget hearing next, at our next meeting in September. So the dates that Gary is telling me he's available, it's all next week, starting with Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, if I was right. So, gentlemen, what's your pleasure on all this?
I want to consult with the attorney first to see what they see in my attention. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday.
He said morning, he said day, evening is all good for him. It doesn't make any difference to him during the evening meeting, he just fine with that.
We're going into budget, and he's doing, he's put together that five-year plan for
us, and he's pretty well up to date with all of what we're doing. And he needs to discuss that with us, show us what he sees. I think he'll be impressed with his forecasting and his work. I know I have been with the RDC. It's simple, but it's very understandable. And I'd just like for him to give a presentation before the end of the budget.
I'm only one voice here, but Thursday and Friday are both, no bills for me, next week.
I'm just whispering about Friday.
And would you like for the whole council to be president? It's just the budget committee, we don't have to advertise a special meeting. I would like the whole, the whole council to be involved. I want everybody to hear this, if possible, here.
One God, all next week, so.
Is this going to be an evening?
Can't be.
We can make it any time you want. How does Tuesday, 11 a.m. work for the majority?
11? Or 10? 21st, 10 or 11 a.m.? How's that looking for everybody? 10 a.m. Tuesday, 21st?
Here?
Here, right here. I assume the ring is available, gentlemen? Next Tuesday at 10 a.m.
Let me check the calendar.
Will this stay in?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I guess I'll make a motion that we have our special meeting with Peter next Tuesday on the 21st at 10 a.m.
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do, is there any other business we brought before us? None of the attended? Okay. We'll go to the staff elected officials reports again, do you have any, of course, to enlighten us with?
No, not really. Couple of quick things I'd like to say is, one, just keep in mind as we talk about the 911 stuff for next year and budgeting, that if we're looking to change that, I've said this to you before, but just a reminder that we need to modify that 911 agreement with the city, at least I think we do. I don't think we want to pay more than our half, so we need to do that, and that's going to take, Dan, what's a month or two to get that through, as far as getting it through both here and there? Okay. So just keep that in mind, if we're going to do that as far as budgeting for next year, that that will be, have to be amended agreement, because it's right now currently set for 10 years at 196 per entity. And the other thing is, is I mentioned yesterday, we passed an ordinance which continues to plug away at the positive side of finding being a self-funded insurance for health insurance, which is something we've tried to get to for several years and taken baby steps at. We finally got to the self-funded. We established the fund for Jennifer Perla State, so that that money stays there and then continues to roll going forward and stuff. So just another positive to add to the five strong years we've had with the clinic and what that's done for us, so hopefully we keep plugging away at this insurance. I won't ever say that the insurance will get cheap, we know that's not true, it's not possible, but we're taking steps to try and make the savings as we're looking.
Thanks, Jim. John?
All right, we two are using the same financial advisor to help us do a better job, Jeff Peters. Very impressed, just as Gary said. You know, CCD, I would really hope that we're part of the discussion with budgeting before it gets to the point that we're handing our budget back. And so here you go, because there's definitely a change of focus and, you know, CCD is, you know, is not just to pay for things we can pay for, but used more for what it's designed for, to cap development. You know, let, let pay for safety, in my opinion, that's what the tax is for. But again, just have that discussion. You just said costs are not going down, you know, we invest, my opinion, we need to invest in growing our community and commerce. That will not only increase our revenue, but spread the cost of the more people, which reduces our individual cost. Just some examples, I guess, of what my line of thinking is. Shelly Drain out there is a, is being assessed, 1,000 homeowners, I believe, over that drain. And honestly, that's an urban drain. And that's in the, in the- And that's, and, uh, that assessment force, uh, in my opinion, is, is not for stormwater, it's for service drainage. And, uh, so, right now, we're working with the city on, uh, on that, how to, how to, uh, continue that as a stormwater drain, as an urban drain, and not necessarily as a, an ag drain. Uh, that cost is gonna be somewhere between 400 and 500,000 dollars. Uh, and if the county splits that with the city, uh, you know, that's, we're looking at a couple hundred grand that we've got in our budget for that, that's just an example. The landfill out there, uh, that, uh, that life ci, uh, life cycle of that landfill now, uh, gives us some opportunities. It's also, we still have responsibilities out there. Uh, we've got some money budgeted to, uh, to continue to, uh, reclamation, I guess, of that, uh, landfill and doing what should have been done forever, but now catching back up. And it could even be an opportunity for, to change a brown space into a green space. Uh, so some of that money has gone to CCD. Uh, you know, our thoroughfare plan, you know, the, you know, it's our long-term road project plan. Uh, prioritize, you know, chip away at, at, at the, the infrastructure issues we have. And, you know, we've been in discussions with Endoc as we, well, I guess, back up a minute. We've done, we did an economic development plan. We've all seen identified areas of opportunity to grow our community economically. And, uh, we've started doing some strategic planning down in those areas, or down in those identified areas, boring down into what our opportunities for growth are and maybe what infrastructure might incent growth. Uh, and then a plan how to achieve that, that's a long-term plan. Uh, a lot of things are, are being identified with, uh, through that process. Uh, one of them on the north side of town, uh, which includes this landfill and, and potential, you know, it ties into our thoroughfare plan and our discussions with Endoc on, on some future road project. So, uh, in that, there was a state project right now that is called Tracks, uh, that, uh, that helps counties use, uh, state dollars to, to build overpasses for safety across, potentially close and crossings, make it a safer environment on our roads. And, and so all that's tying together, and it looks like we're, uh, we're in the running for that grant. You know, we're talking millions of dollars from the state to help us with that. You know, and, and, and as Endoc sees our plans, it's, it's helping them prioritize what their long-term work is. So I guess I'd just, again, like to, to, you know, be quick and easy, grab money out of CCD. Uh, I'd like to have the discussion with Jeff Peters, which you guys are using, and we all talk about what the long-term opportunities are of that, uh, that levy, and, uh, and how we utilize it the best.